Good evening, everyone. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Bangor City Council. Today is September twenty fifth. And as usual, we start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask you all, please rise. And I'll ask Representative, former City Councilor Joe Perry to lead us off.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the top of its head.
Thank you, Joe. Before we get into the meeting, we have a recognition tonight. Recognizing the Friends of Dakin Pool. Whereas the Friends of Dakin's pools jump in the campaign to support Dakin Pool. Seeks funds to resurface the pool deck, replace the pool slide, repair the poolhouse, purchase apparel and incentive for the lifeguards. Provide free admission at select times and support future pool upgrades. Whereas to date, the donors have contributed eighty-three thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars toward the goal of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, including an unsolicited donation of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation, and forty-five thousand dollars from the Penobscot County Commissioners. Whereas during the summer of two thousand and twenty-three, Dakin Pool was open seven days a week. And the Friends of Dakin Pool funded six days with free admission. Whereas the Friends of Dakin Pool provided a microwave chairs, step stool for the poolhouse, and purchased twenty-six rain jackets for the lifeguards. And whereas the Friends of Dakin Pool delivered free meals to the lifeguards on the nights they worked late. And whereas the Friends of Dakin Pool maintained a Facebook page to promote the pool and post alerts regarding unexpected closures. And whereas the efforts of the Friends of Dakin Pool generated nineteen positive news stories between April and August of two thousand and twenty-three. Now therefore, I, Richard Alphornia, the second Mayor of the City of Bangor, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Bangor, to hereby recognize the Friends of Dakin Pool for their efforts to support and improve the Dakin Pool for all Bangor residents, given this twenty-fifth day of September, two thousand and twenty-three. And if I could have the Friends of Dakin Pool come up here and maybe take a picture.
Photo op and everything. Can I have this drop? You all want to kind of swing around?
Thank you. Anyone want to say anything? Mic's on.
We'd just like to thank you for this honor and this recognition. We've worked really hard. We find the pool is really important to the community. And we're dedicated to helping the city keep it going for as long as we can. And we've brought a gift for hopefully each of you. You can help us, help us in our promotion efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I did one. I got one.
All right. This is the portion of the meeting we've set aside for comments from the public. If there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on a subject. I'll get my glasses. Other than what's on their regular agenda, they may do so by coming to the podium, giving their name and address and stating their message. Public comment, whether in person or through Zoom. I ask that any inappropriate or offensive remarks, they will be removed. And as Council Chair, I have discretion over the time allowed for comment. And as I've been doing so for the last couple of months, is limiting it to three minutes. On Zoom, the public may be recognized to speak by the handway function or on the phone by pressing star nine. So with that, I'll open up the public comment. If none, I will, oh.
Real quick, just three minutes. Hi, my name is Michael Norton, eighty-three Elm Street, Unit C, Bangor, Maine. I have this, I've mentioned to you before, I have this pure mathematical system of measure for magnetism. And part of what I've learned from that is that the teachers and professors across the board in the U.S. and the U.K. and elsewhere are performing at about in chemistry, about forty percent levels. So if a student goes into their classrooms in the modern day today and gets an A or B and walks out, they're still failing because the teacher is only performing at forty percent. And for geologists, it's about fifty percent. But I'm reaching out to the council to ask for references because I've been, I've applied to the U.N. Panel for Climate Change this week and their executive search firm in New York. There's an open position for a Deputy Secretary there. And I think the formalized magnetism system of measure can help there and in places like the ESI Group that I reached out to. At Harvard University today, they've done some extraordinary research in climate science and seismic science with regard to earthquakes. I think someday we'll have like a a twenty-four hour earthquake watch window available in places like the Ring of Fire in the Pacific or L.A., where earthquakes commonly occur. But we have to pull the data together more succinctly, and I think that magnetism program will help with that. So yeah, I'm just looking for references if if you all might consider yourselves as good references. I certainly do. I mean, I have a Master of Public Administration. You know how to reach me. And these applications call, often call for professionals in the field to give reference like that. So I think that's it. It's a great opportunity. We can get the professors and teachers up to A-plus performance levels and introduce the system to the students, then the industries and the infrastructures that rely on precise measures like that will be doing much better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none on Zoom, we have Mike.
There, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Oh, good work this week. My name is Mike Toller. I live at two fifty-three Maple Street, President of Bangor Friends of Affordable Housing. And listening to the workshop earlier, compassionate frustration. I guess I got to vent a little bit tonight because I understand that feeling so much in the last few weeks. The number of calls I get people asking for help and not simply not having the time or the ability to help every single person. So I understand, Joe, what you were saying about, you know, everybody's right at the max. It doesn't seem like we can accomplish anymore. But this week I also heard a figure that there's a forty-four hundred homeless children in Maine. Ninety in Bangor. That seems unbelievable. I just can't imagine ninety homeless children in Bangor. I haven't run across those kind of numbers. But how can we say we're overwhelmed? We're at the breaking point. What do we do? Just throw them off the bridge? I gotta just keep trying. And I hope everybody else just keeps on reaching out. I am appreciative of what the, what the city has done. The Landhold liaison program, the real reach they're doing. But all the compassionate frustration, the desire to do more. It just hurts. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one on Zoom, anyone else here? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda.
Minutes of Bangor City Council, regular meeting of September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Government Operations Committee meetings of January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, and March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Liquor license renewals, application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of the main tavern, doing business as the main tavern, one fifty-two Main Street. Application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of G.M.R.I. Inc., doing business as the Olive Garden, seven forty-one Hogan Road. Application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of Chopsticks Restaurant, doing business as Chopsticks Restaurant, one sixty-seven Center Street. Application for liquor license renewal malt wine spirits of Jerry Bangor Holiday Inc., doing business as Holiday Inn, four oh four Audlin Road. Application for liquor license renewal of Queen City Cinema Club, doing business, doing business as Queen City Cinema Club, one twenty-eight B Main Street. Twenty-three dash two seven seven order authorizing the execution of municipal bill of sale located at twenty-one E Street, Birch Hill Estates. Twenty-three dash two seven eight order authorizing the execution of municipal bill of sale located at twenty-five A Street, Birch Hill Estates. Twenty-three dash two seven nine order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at thirty-six Sugarloaf Lane. Twenty-three dash two eight zero order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at fifty-fourteenth Street. Twenty-three dash two eight one order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at fifty-one Grant Street. Twenty-three dash two eight two order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at sixty-five Benjamin's Way. Twenty-three dash two eight three order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at sixty-nine Center Street. Twenty-three dash two eight four order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at one ninety-three Thornton Road. Twenty-three dash two eight five order authorizing the execution of municipal bill of sale located at two seventy-eight Cedar Falls Mobile Home Park. Twenty-three dash two eight six order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at nine thirty-three Finson Road. Twenty-three dash two eight seven order authorizing the execution of municipal bill of sale located at nine seventy-nine Essex Street, Lot thirty-three. Twenty-three dash two eight eight order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at Beena Estates. Twenty-three dash two eight nine order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at Essex Street. Twenty-three dash two nine zero order authorizing city manager to donate a retired police cruiser to the United Technologies Center. Twenty-three dash two nine one order authorizing city manager to accept a donation of six trees from Bangor Beautiful. Twenty-three dash two nine two order authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bangor and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME Local nine twenty-six, Council ninety-three, representing Public Works employees. Twenty-three dash two nine three order authorizing the annual update of the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan for the Community Connector. I move passage of the consent agenda.
We have a motion. We have a second. If there are no objections. It's a vote most doubted. Referrals to committees and first reading.
Twenty-three dash two nine four ordinance amending chapter twenty-three Boards, Committees, Commissions, Section twenty-three dash thirty-seven by allowing the City Council Committee to request a meeting of the Downtown Parking Advisory Committee, first reading. Twenty-three dash two nine five ordinance amending chapter one sixty-five Land Development Code by adding the use of permanent supportive housing as a conditional use in the low-density residential LDR, high-density residential HDR, and multifamily and service district MNSD zones, first reading and referral to Planning Board meeting of October third, two thousand and twenty-three. Twenty-three dash two nine six ordinance correcting typographic errors in Council Ordinance twenty-three dash one four one voted on and passed on May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, which amended chapter one sixty-five Land Development Code to clarify the protections, allowances, and restrictions for non-conforming uses, structures, and lots, first reading. Twenty-three dash two nine seven resolve authorizing the city manager to accept and appropriate four hundred and six thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars for the supplemental nutrition education grant program from the University of New England, first reading and referral to Government Operations Committee meeting on October second, two thousand and twenty-three. Can move these items be referred?
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. If there are no objections, these items are referred. Unfinished business.
Twenty-three dash two seven zero ordinance amending chapter one sixty-five Land Development Code, District map to rezoned property located on Ohio Street from urban residence one District U R D one and rural residence and agricultural district R R and A to high-density residential HDR, Counselor Sprague.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move passage of ordinance twenty-three two seventy. This ordinance will amend chapter one sixty-five of the Land Development Code, District map to rezoned property located on Ohio Street from urban residence one District U R D one and rural residence and agricultural district R R and A to high-density residential HDR. The applicant is seeking a zone change for the property at map lot R fourteen oh six C located on Ohio Street from U R D one and R R and A to HDR. The total area requested to be changed is approximately nine point one acres and is shown on the attached exhibit. The change to the HDR district would allow for larger multifamily dwellings and other high-density residential uses on the property versus the current low-density residential uses allowed by the U R D one and R R and A zones. The neighborhood consists of a mix of simple family homes, townhomes, and apartment buildings. The zoning in the area is primarily a mix of U R D one, LDR, R R and A, and HDR, and some GNISD where there are schools. This area is within the growth boundary shown in the twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan. And the future land use map in the plan shows this area as consisting of medium-density residential development with limited commercial and institutional uses that are complementary to the surrounding residential areas. This item was reviewed and recommended for ought not to pass by the Planning Board at its meeting on September ninth, nineteenth, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-three. Motion for passage of the zone change was two in favor and five against.
We have a motion. We have a second. Questions, comments? Counselor Schaefer?
Can we ask Ann to come up and explain the Planning Board first and?
Good evening. Ann Craig, Director of Community and Economic Development. There were concerns expressed by neighbors and some of them are here this evening about impacts from a higher-density development. On one side of the project, it's sort of, it is a transitional piece of land. One side does have multifamily, and on the other side, it's much more single-family. So there were concerns about traffic, the removal of trees, the right-of-way width, and if the designation was spot zoning. As I indicated to the, to the Planning Board, we're in a kind of an in-between zone of reviewing zoning district changes because, you know, we have this comprehensive plan and now we need to implement the land use plan. We haven't been able to start that yet. I was hoping to start it, you know, in the fall, but it might be in a couple of months that we start that. And and, and so the, the plan, as Counselor Sprague read, calls for what's, what will be known as medium density, but the implementation process of the land use plan will define what that really is. So we don't know what that is right now. And there were board members that were concerned about doing a zoning change without having a good understanding of what that means, of what medium density means. So that, that and the agreement with the concerns of the neighbors is why the motion failed to pass.
Can I follow up? The, so the parcel next to it is like a condo development and it's LDR. Is that parcel as developed as it can be under LDR? Or is there a reason why LDR, you have any insight to why LDR might not have been pursued for this parcel?
Yeah, the applicant is likely to come back. If the, if the council chooses to support the Planning Board and doesn't pass it, the applicant has indicated that he will come back with a low-density residential request.
And will we end up with like a definition of medium density?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we may, yeah, we're gonna have this conversation again about what is medium density.
And just like how that existing complex would factor in the future. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ann? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is, excuse me, Tom Russell. I'm a retired attorney who represented municipalities and land use matters for throughout my career. I'm appearing before you tonight as a co-owner with my wife and our trust of our unit thirty-one at Sable Ridge. And I am opposed to this zone change application. I'm gonna focus on the consistency with the comprehensive plan. My neighbors may have other issues to discuss. As you know, zoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And you adopted the twenty-two comprehensive plan, which calls for this to be neighborhood residential under the future land use map, which is medium density. This zone application is high-density. Even the title of the section is inconsistent with what you might want to consider as medium density. And I think you should look at what the possible uses are if you change it to HDR. I realize there are limitations on the development of lots. When you change something to HDR, anything that's in there is a permitted use or a conditional use could be developed. So I've looked at two of the permitted uses. One of them is one or more buildings containing two to six dwelling units. Given the provisions of Section one sixty-five Attachment Three, which lays out the development standards, they could build seventeen buildings on that lot with six per building. That's a hundred and two dwelling units, nine dwelling units per acre. I don't consider that to be medium density. The next permitted use is seven to twelve dwellings in a building. Under that one, they could have eleven buildings, hundred and thirty-two dwelling units. That's twelve dwelling units per acre. Again, I don't think that comports with any concept of what a medium density would be, even though you haven't defined it yet. And it gets even worse from our perspective when you look at the conditional uses. One or more buildings containing thirteen to thirty dwelling units. Under the Attachment Three, they could have five buildings with thirty in each building, hundred and fifty dwelling units, thirteen dwelling units per acre. Again, I don't think that's comport with medium density. You also have mobile home parks, which the standards say they could have sixty-six mobile homes. Congregate housing could have over a hundred dwelling units. None of this is consistent with medium density. I know there is some HDR zoning out there, but that's basically Capehart, which was built back in what, fifty, sixty, something like that? That was built by the federal government to house the folks at Dow Air Force Base. I don't even know if the city had a zoning ordinance back then, but if they did, the federal government is not subject to it. So the city really had no approval or say in the development of that high-density area. I don't think that should be used as an example to put high-density on the other side of Ohio Street where there is none there now. Like I said, the, the, the planning board was stated that the planning board voted five to two that this application ought not to pass. I don't think a city council should adopt this HDR zone change. That is totally inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, no matter any common sense definition of medium density. In this essence, on this side of Ohio Street, you would create an HDR island in a sea of R R and A, LDR, and U R D one. That sounds like spot zoning to me. Now, I know the city spent a lot of time, effort, and money on developing this twenty-two comprehensive plan. And I believe the adoption of this application would undermine its integrity because at rate of vote, you'll be proving some of those uses when it's supposed to be developed as neighborhood residential, i.e. medium density. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Counselor Schaefer?
Just to clarify, it would take six counselors to vote for this to overturn the Planning Board's decision. And I can, I can say that for myself, I don't plan on supporting this. So I just want to make sure that that was clear. It's a little different. It's not just a simple majority, but it would take two-thirds vote to.
And just Sable Ridge, for example, is, you know, it's your forty-four condo units there. And it's nine point six two acres. So we're a little under, but we're like four point seven units per acre. So it's for comparison. Thank you.
Good to see you, Tom. Glad you're still practicing on the side.
Hi. My name is Victoria Omenman. I live at fourteen forty-eight Ohio Street. I've been there for about thirty years. And I'm an R R A zone. My land abouts the sprague right away from Ohio Street that goes up into this land between me and my neighbor. And we had questions about where are they gonna put a road? Where, how are they getting to this land? One reason why we were against it is because we've been offered no idea whatsoever, even at the Planning Board meeting, about what they intend to do up there or what they were intending, and how are they planning to get to it? To further his comments about continuity. When I moved out there, there were a few things out there, but it was all agricultural from the past, except for Capehart. And losing my train of thought, it slowly changed over in those years to residential housing. And in that time, right up until the last two years, five streets have been developed off of Ohio Street in the same direction. They've been given street names. They're new streets in Bangor since thirty years ago. And they're all nice residential houses. Some of them with a little, the street has a little cul-de-sac off to the side with some other houses. So this is continued. The only difference is the LD, LDR. So I don't understand why if they did want to do a little developing out there and even have some multi-housing like in our LDR unit, Sable Ridge, why they couldn't adopt something that was less encompassing and scary as what they are asking for. I even, I know they're working on this medium density thing, but I also found out when going through your people's websites, you also have something called U R D two. Our units are U D one. I don't really understand what that is. I read all definitions of your zones and some of them are kind of, they kind of overlap each other. And they're hard to kind of really make, have the tails of what, what you're saying. So the latest one you have, which you have allowed about to develop within the last year or so, is is at the Davis Road End. I consider our neighborhood between Vincent Road and Davis Road. And um it's a real nice development. It looks like it's about ten acres from what I can judge, with two-story, single-family houses. Um so that's you being consistent, putting all of those, allowing all of those roadways and developments to go in there. We've also acquired a small church with a Christian school. Uh I would like to say also for you that didn't grow up in Bangor like I did, Capeport has a front side and a back side. The front side has single-family, one-story houses down Ohio Street and on the first of Davis Road that were built for officers stationed at Dow Air Force Base, and those are now single-family residents also down uh into Blue Hill West. On this side of the Downey School, the other side, the Vincent Road side of Capeport is where the housing uh the the lot of people living in those residents, the H D R stands. And there has been over the years a lot of problems down there, as I'm sure the police can tell you. They even used to have a an officer living down there, kind of quell the problems that they were having with drugs and alcohol and fighting and what have you. So anyway, that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Uh my name's Tom Debold. I'm a resident at Sable Ridge on Ohio Street, and I'm I'm in opposition to this plan as well. It's just completely the proposed variance is contrary to what the zoning plan is about. And so to grant this would be to basically be unable to deny anybody else's request for a variance. There'd be no reason to say no to anybody for any request. So it's a spot change. It it doesn't fit the character of the plan. It's out of character with the neighborhood. And I just wanna recognize we've got various residents here from Sable Ridge who may or may not choose to speak, but they wanted to be here to show that they are very much opposed to this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jim Munch, and I live at Sable Ridge as well, uh Unit thirty-two. And uh I appreciate all your attention here. I think a number of issues have been covered and covered reasonably thoroughly. Uh couple of points, though. One, you know, the comprehensive plan, which really garnered a lot of work. There's a lot of focus on it, as there should have been. And this steps outside of that, and it doesn't step out for any good reason. I mean, we we don't, of course, in a situation like this, know what will be done. It doesn't, we don't have to be told that yet, as I understand how these things work. But we do know that if there's a request to shift this to high density, then a high-density solution is sought. Otherwise, it's developable land. There are projects that can be done there, as is. However, a change to L to high density is a significant change that runs counter to the co work done in the comprehensive plan, as I understand it. It also is, you know, we've got a very small, specific spot here. And we're ch we're dealing with a change in zoning with respect to that. And that carries, I I mean, the only reason for doing that is to benefit one particular piece, one particular piece owned by a particular individual who certainly has the uh the right to seek to develop the land. But that tells us we're looking at a change to a much higher level of usage. And I don't know if you've had a chance to go out there, but I live there. Access is very limited. It's very narrow. It's going to be a mess if it's a high-density, a significant amount of traffic. That's one major issue. Another major issue is that the high-density allowed uses would be significantly intrusive, and that's the point of having a comprehensive plan. So all these good folks who have showed up and others who weren't able to but are upset about this have a good reason for it. We rely on things like comprehensive plans. That's what people, that's why we have it. That's why we follow it. That's why we like where we are, because more housing is good. But more housing can be done with this under the current extant zoning, maybe not as massive. But that's the reason why we have that. So we have that factor. And the other issue is frankly, I'm not sure how this is distinguished from the old worry problem, H O A R Y, of spot zone. I think this really remind, you know, looks to me like that. This isn't my area. Tom Russell has done. I'm I'm an attorney, but I don't, I don't do I haven't done much with municipalities. I have from time to time over the last thirty years, but I'm familiar with the general doctrines and the reasons for them. And the idea is that people can repose confidence in what a particular zoning is and what a plan is headed for. And that's what we're all reacting to is, wait a minute, why? What's what's the point of changing this in a very small spot? In a very awkward spot to increase it to a very high density of use. So I wouldn't encourage you to think of those. We had a very good hearing. I uh have not had the pleasure of appearing before the planning board before, and I frankly was impressed. It was what board meeting should be. There was a fair exchange of ideas, a lot of thought. I was like, this was great. This is what it's supposed to be. And they voted five-two after some rigorous debate. And I urge uh urge you all to uh support that. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Uh I also live at Sable Ridge Oaks uh in Unit Number Eight. My name is Carolyn Adams. And uh I also oppose um the change to high density and would request um that you uh turn it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charles Martin. I live at uh Number Seven, Sable Ridge, and I just wanna voice my opposition to making changes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion. We have a second. Roll where this is an ordinance, roll call vote.
Counselor Davitt?
No.
Counselor Leonard?
No.
Counselor Schaefer?
No.
Counselor Spring?
No.
Counselor Trumbull?
No.
Counselor Yakabaga?
No.
Counselor Fornia?
No.
Zero yes, seven no.
So my question is, do I gavel because we do not pass it? I do? The ordinance is not passed. There you go. Thank you. And just to address uh Mr. Munch, uh we do have a very strong planning board, and it's a good group of people I I have a lot of respect for um, and they do a phenomenal job. So thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I don't like the chairman so much, but uh Thank you. Next.
Twenty-three dash two-seven-one, resolve accepting and appropriating sixty-one thousand dollars for additional design and engineering costs from the National Guard Bureau and the Maine Air National Guard for the Runway Rehabilitation Project at Bangor International Airport. Counselor Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh I make a motion on twenty-three dash two-seven-one.
Second.
This resolve will accept and appropriate sixty-one thousand dollars from the National Guard Bureau and the Maine Air National Guard for design and engineering costs for the Runway Rehabilitation Project at Bangor International Airport. The city originally accepted and appropriated a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on Resolve two-two dash three-one-three. These additional funds will bring the total to two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. The runway project, excuse me, was postponed as bids significantly exceeded the available funding. This resulted in the need to reprogram the bid specifications, which resulted in additional costs. This is a joint project between the Guard and the city, which will ensure the continued use for military and public purposes. Our current agreement outlines the terms and conditions for the Guard's contributions to the cost of this project. This cooperative agreement identifies the Guard's share of the project at thirty-five percent based on their annual usage. This item was reviewed and recommended for approval at the Finance Committee meeting on September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion. We have a second. Uh questions, comments? If none, uh if there are no objections, Resolve twenty-three dash two-seven-one will have uh passage.
Public hearing, application for special amusement license renewal of the Main Tavern, Inc., doing business as the Main Tavern, one fifty-two Main Street. Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to open the public hearing for the application for special amusement license renewal of the Main Tavern. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, public hearing is now open.
Seeing no one approach, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Public hearing, seeing there's there's no objections, public hearing is now closed.
I move approval of the application for special amusement license renewal of the Main Tavern. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, the application has passage.
Public hearing, application for special amusement license renewal of Jerry Bangor Holiday, Inc., doing business as Holiday Inn, four oh four Oddlin Road. Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to open the public hearing for the application for special amusement license renewal of Jerry Bangor. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, uh public hearing is open.
Seeing no one approach, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, public hearing is closed.
I move approval of the application for special amusement license renewal of Jerry Bangor Holiday, Inc. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, the application has passage.
Public hearing, application for special amusement license renewal of Queen City Cinema Club, doing business as Queen City Cinema Club, one twenty-eight B Main Street. Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to open the public hearing for the application for special amusement license renewal of Queen City Cinema Club. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, the public hearing is now open.
Seeing no one approach, I move to close the public hearing for application for special amusement license renewal. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Public hearing is now closed.
I move passage of the application for special amusement license renewal of Queen City Cinema Club. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, the application has passage. See ya.
Liquor license renewal, application for liquor license renewal, malt wine spirits of Evan Roode's, doing business Evan Roode's, twenty-five Broad Street. Counselor Schaefer?
I move passage of the liquor license renewal for uh for malt renewal malt wine spirits of Even Runes. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, the application will have passage.
Twenty-three dash two-nine-eight, order authorizing the award of up to two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars in state and local fiscal recovery funds to support direct costs of food and medicines workforce navigator to assist Bangor residents. Counselor Yakabaga?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move the passage of Order twenty-three dash two-ninety-eight.
Second.
Thank you. This order will authorize the award of up to two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, three hundred and forty-two in state and local fiscal recovery funds, AKA ARPA funds, to food and medicine fam for the direct costs associated with the creation of a workforce navigator position to assist Bangor residents. As a sub-recipient of state and federal grant funds, fam currently employs one peer workforce navigator that provides services to seven counties. A workforce navigator works with individuals to improve residency rates within the unemployment benefit system and to guide workers to new jobs, education, and other resources. In addition to the work with individuals, the position would build programs for other community organizations to utilize, which includes training staff members and or volunteers. This award is in support of the following. This award will provide funding to support the to support workforce development. This award will provide funding to support the provision of services to disproportionately impacted community members. This item was reviewed and recommended at the City Council Workshop on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, uh Order twenty-three dash two-ninety-eight will have passage.
Twenty-three dash two-nine-nine, order authorizing the award of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in state and local fiscal recovery funds to support Friends of Together Places' expansion of housing within Bangor. Counselor Yakabaga?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move the passage of Order twenty-three dash two-ninety-nine.
Second.
Thank you. This order will authorize the award of three hundred seven seventy-five thousand dollars in state and local fiscal recovery funds, AKA ARPA funds, to Friends of Together Place, a nonprofit entity to support the acquisition and renovation of a property in Bangor with a minimum of six units. The purpose is to provide housing opportunities for up to ten low-income individuals diagnosed with a mental health disorder, including substance use disorders. As properties acquired by Friends of Together Place are converted to permanent housing options, the buildings are transferred to Together Place Housing, Inc., Alimented Equity Cooperative Housing Corporation. To ensure any property acquired remains in use for the awarded purpose, any property acquired will require either a deferred mortgage or deed restriction. As of this date, a property has not been identified. Should a property not be identified within one year of the date of this order, the award will lapse. The original application submitted was on behalf of Together Place Housing, Inc. The board requested that any award be made to Friends of Together Place, which aligns with the methods they have historically employed to acquire properties for their mission. The two organizations will each invest sixty-nine thousand dollars in conjunction with the ARPA funding to acquire and renovate six additional units. This award is in support of the following: investment in affordable housing, investment in mental health and substance use disorder. This item was reviewed and recommended at the City Council Workshop on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion. We have a second. If there is no objection, Order twenty-three dash two-nine-nine will have passage.
Twenty-three dash three hundred, order authorizing the award of fifty thousand dollars in state and local fiscal recovery funds to support St. Andre's Homes Courage Lives Project. Counselor Trumbull?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Chairman, I move a passage of Order twenty-three dash three hundred.
Second.
This will authorize the award of fifty thousand in state and local fiscal recovery funds known as ARPA to St. Andre Home to support the expansion of the Courage Lives Project. Courage Lives provides community-based enhanced behavioral healthcare and related support services for anyone impacted by human trafficking, exploitation, domestic and sexual violence. The award would provide partial funding for the program to hire a full-time mental health clinician and case manager who could provide service to at least fifty people annually. Further, the staffing additions would allow for an increase in community education and the expansion of the empowerment pantry. The date St. Andre Home has secured the additional hundred and sixty thousand in funding necessary to support this project. The award is in support of the following: one-time funding that will support operating costs of a nonprofit to overcome the negative economic impacts experienced as a result of the pandemic. This award also will provide funding to support the provision of services to disproportionately impacted community. This was reviewed and recommended at a council workshop on September nineteenth, twenty twenty.
We have a motion. We have a second. If there are no objections, Order twenty-three dash three hundred will have passage.
Twenty-three dash three-zero-one, order authorizing the award of one million, five hundred thousand dollars in state and local fiscal recovery funds to Penquess Cap to construct a new childcare center. Counselor Davitt?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move passage of Order twenty-three dash three-zero-one.
Second.
Thank you. This order authorized the award of one million, five hundred thousand dollars in state and local fiscal recovery funds, AKA ARPA funds, to Penquess Cap to consolidate their early head start, head start and childcare services into a newly constructed center. A new facility would preserve and support high-quality, affordable early child care and education services. Head start programs have been flat-funded for years. With increases in costs, including leases and staff, Penquess has been forced to reduce the number of available slots to operate within their designated funding. As a participant in the State of Maine's Childcare Subsidy Program, which assists slow and moderate income families with a gross family income at or below eighty-five percent of Maine state median income, Penquess cannot charge more than the market rate established by a state survey. This is currently two hundred and twenty-five dollars a week for infants, two hundred and thirty week for, oh, two fifty-five, I'm sorry, two fifty-five a week. Counselor Schaefer, I appreciate you. Uh two fifty-five a week for infants, two hundred and thirty dollars a week for toddlers, and two hundred and five dollars a week for preschoolers, six weeks to five years. The proposed project cost is seven million, five hundred and seventy-seven million. Yeah. Penquess will be submitting a formal request to carry forward three million of unexpected federal Penquess will be submitting a formal request to carry forward three million of unexpected federal head start funding for this purpose. These funds are set to expire in May of twenty-twenty-four and represent a one-time opportunity due to reductions in service during the pandemic and staff savings. As part of this request to carry forward funding, Penquess will need to convey a policy council with parent caregiver representation to convene a policy council with parent caregiver representation from each of their locations. The balance of the project funding will come from Penquess funds and a one-point-five-hundred-and-sixty-one million dollar commercial loan. The efficiencies of having one center will allow Penquess greater flexibility in staffing and reduce occupancy costs. This is expected to have a positive impact on the number of childcare slots that can be maintained, which is currently a hundred-and-twenty-eight, and allow for the creation of an additional sixteen slots. This award is in support of the following: investment in facilities to support healthy, healthy childhood environments, investment in access to and expansion of affordable childcare. This item was reviewed and recommended at a city council workshop on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no objections, I do want to make the record known that uh, Counselor Leonard has stepped out because there is a conflict of interest. As well as he stepped out during the Evenrood uh vote as well, I neglected to mention earlier. That being said, um, seeing no objections, order um twenty-three dash three-zero-one will have passage. And that brings us to the end of the meeting. Anything from staff other than a hand-wave function? We're good? All right. Counselor Sprague? Counselor Yakobaga?
Good night.
Counselor Trumble?
Good night.
Counselor Leonard?
Good evening and good night.
Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the last item with childcare and I made uh Counselor Davitt correct that two-twenty, thirty-five to two-fifty-five because I don't think that people really understand the expense of childcare until you're paying for it. So two-fifty-five a week is per kid. It's not per family. It's also two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars for every single week, including the ones where everyone in your house has hand, foot and mouth, including the ones where you're on vacation, including the ones where uh, your, your kid is sick, whatever. Every single day you pay for it. You pay for every single week. So that's two-fifty-five times fifty-two. I did not do the math on that. But I can tell you that two-fifty-five a week, four weeks in a month, that's over a thousand dollars a month for market rate uh childcare. This isn't a private nanny. It's not an au pair. This is drop your kid off at daycare, spill coffee on your shirt, childcare. Um, that is more than my mortgage. Uh, it's more than a lot of people's rent. It's such an expense. And yet it is absolutely essential to our economy to have quality childcare. Um, quality childcare keeps women in the workforce, allows women to grow wealth and grow skills. And if a woman leaves the workforce, she's not contributing to her retirement. She is not growing her skills. It's harder to, to re-enter. I'm a very extremely proud professional working mother. My kids are teenagers now. Um, sometimes I think they're expect, more expensive than two-fifty-five a week. But I remember paying daycare for two kids was um more than, I'm looking at colleges now. And a lot of the college bottom line, I'm like, well, we did it for daycare. So I guess we can, I'm making more now because I stayed in the workforce. I make more than I did when I entered the workforce. So I guess we can just consider a daycare payment to send my daughter to college. Childcare is scarce. We don't have enough of it. It's expensive. It should be subsidized by the government. I will, this is why I wanted childcare as a priority for ARPA funds. Um, and so I'm really glad to see this one get awarded. And good night.
Counselor Davitt?
Thank you. I won't uh try and repeat what Counselor Schaefer said so perfectly, but I just, it ties into, to everything we've talked about earlier this evening and always talk about. And then with the other ARPA awards we've done tonight, I mean, when you, when you have childcare for your kids, you can work. And that means that your kid is probably hopefully not living in a car with you. But we know that that, even when parents can work, um, that we still have children who are unhoused in our city. But we're looking at things like the workforce with our grants. We looked at mental health and then we looked at childcare, just with tonight's, what we've done so far. So I'm really grateful to staff um and the rest of the council for supporting these items. Um, and just to the organizations, even the ones we've had to say no to, uh, we really appreciate people coming forward. But I'm, I'm excited about the impact that these are all going to have in Bangor. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Um, so I was really happy when my kids got out of diapers. And then I was really happy when daycare got done, but I was even more happy when college got done. So that being said, um, thank you for your comments. Um, we are adjourned. Good evening.